All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Noonan, I’m the Superintendent of Schools, and welcome to our January 14th organizational meeting and regular meeting of the School Board. Each year, one time, the Superintendent gets to begin the meeting as the Acting Chair until a new School Board member is elected, and this evening I have that privilege. Before we get started, though, I do want to welcome a couple special guests, Chuck and Carol Sosko, welcome. Glad you’re here to see your wonderful daughter, School Board Member Amy Murphy, in action, so thanks for joining us this evening. So I’d like to call this meeting to order, and Ms. Goodell, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Anderson? Not here, sorry. Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Henderson’s not here. Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Sherwood?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Tice?
Here.
Thank you.
Would everyone please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We’ll now move to the adoption of the agenda. I seek a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Tice?
I move that the Board adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Chair Gould, or former Chair Gould, I guess, sorry. All those in favor say yes. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, the motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the organizational portion of the meeting, and the first item of business is to elect a Chair. So at this point in time, I’ll accept nominations and of names for Chair, and the way this will work is after all of the nominations have been made, a roll call vote shall be taken with each Board Member naming the person for whom he or she is voting for. A nominee must receive a majority of four of the votes to be elected. The roll call will be repeated until a Chair is elected, so I’d like to open the floor for nominations for Chair. Ms. Silverman?
I would like to nominate Tate Gould.
Okay. Thank you, Tate Gould for nomination from Ms. Silverman. Any other nominations? All right, seeing none, we have a nomination for Tate Gould for Chair of the Falls Church City School Board. I will now close the nominations, and we’ll take a roll call vote by person. Ms. Goodell is going to call the roll, and just as a reminder, as she calls the roll, you must say the name of the person that you’re voting for. So Ms. Goodell, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gould.
Yes, I’m voting for Tate.
Ms. Henderson?
Voting for Tate Gould.
Ms. Murphy?
Voting for Tate Gould.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood?
Voting for Tate Gould.
Ms. Silverman?
Tate Gould.
And Ms. Tice?
Tate Gould.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Chair Gould. I will now, yes, we’ll clap it up. I will now metaphorically pass you the gavel to the Chair, and you may proceed with the elections of the Vice Chair and the organizational portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, I appreciate it, and thank you for, fellow Board Members, we’re all wondering if you’re going to turn over the gavel, or if you’re just going to run the meeting and call it early, we appreciate you letting us take back over. And thanks to my fellow Board Members for the trust for another year. I understand we don’t have term limits, and I promise I will not abuse that. I’m looking forward to serving this year, as we have a number of big transitions for our district, and it’s an honor to represent you all and looking forward to this, to this year of serving with you all, it’s a great Board to work with. So the next item that we would like to get to is the item 2.02, which is the election of the Vice Chair, and we’ll follow the same process that we use for the election of the Chair. I’m going to accept nominations of names for the Vice Chair, and after all nominations have been made, a roll call vote shall be taken for each Board Member naming the person for whom he or she is voting. A nominee must receive four votes to be elected, and the roll call vote will be repeated until a Vice Chair is elected. I’d like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair. Ms. Murphy?
I would like to nominate Kathleen Tice.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Are there other nominations from the floor? Okay. All right, so Ms. Kathleen Tice has been nominated as Vice Chair of the Falls Church City School Board. I will now close nominations, and we’ll take a roll call vote for person by person. Ms. Goodell?
Mr. Gould.
Yes, to Kathleen Tice.
Ms. Henderson?
Kathleen Tice.
Ms. Murphy?
Kathleen Tice.
Ms. Sherwood?
Kathleen Tice.
Ms. Silverman?
Kathleen Tice.
And Ms. Tice.
Kathleen Tice.
Thank you.
All right. I think there’s a line in a Who song that says, “Meet the new boss the same as the old boss,” and it seems appropriate for tonight. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I’ll just echo Chair Gould’s sentiments, that I am very grateful for the opportunity to serve again, and I’ve really enjoyed the last year, and really am looking forward to another year of serving with you all.
Thank you, Ms. Tice, Vice Chair Tice, yes, and also I do look forward to working with you. I know we have different perspectives, and that makes the Board stronger, and it’s always been an honor to work with you, and every day, it seems, so yes.
Yes, many times multiple times. Yes, thank you.
Oh, all right, all right, thank you, sir. Yes. All right, now we’re going to move on, we’ve got a part of the organizational part of the meeting, we’ve got a number of initial business items that we have to go through, and these are to set up time and place and different appointments, so just bear with us while we work through it. Starting with 2.03, we’re going to set the date, time, and place of the regular School Board meeting. Can I please have a motion for 2.03? Ms. Sherwood?
I move that the Falls Church School Board establish a schedule of regular meetings on the second Tuesday of each month beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers at City Hall, and establish a schedule of work sessions on the fourth Tuesday of each month beginning at 7:00 p.m. at the Central Office Conference Room, Falls Church.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. 2.04, the appointment of the School Board Clerk. May I please have a nomination for, or a motion for appointment of School Board Clerk? Ms. Henderson?
I move that the School Board appoint Martha Goodell, Clerk of the School Board, beginning January 2025.
All right, and do we have a second? Ms. Silverman? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right, any opposed? All right, and likewise, Ms. Goodell, we all look forward to working with you for another year, as always, and as we all say, it’s the, it’s the engine that drives all of us, and we really appreciate, and it’s an honor to work with you, so thank you for your service. All right, 2.05, resolution authorizing School Board officials to sign warrants. Can I please have a motion? Ms. Murphy?
Be it resolved that under the provision of Section 22.1-122B of the Code of Virginia, Peter Noonan, Superintendent, is appointed Agent, and Kristin Michael, Chief Operating Officer, is appointed Duty Agent to examine and approve claims and to sign warrants for the payment thereof. Be it further resolved that the Agent and Deputy Agent shall further assurety bond conditioned upon the faithful performance and discharge of the duties assigned to each such official under Section 22.1-122B in the amount of $100,000, and the premium therefore shall be paid out of School Board funds.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. How’d she do? Ms. Murphy, she did great back there, right? Yes, all right, got thumbs up from the audience. All right, 2.06, approved designee to attend School Board meetings in absence of the Superintendent. Ms. Henderson?
I move that the School Board designate Chief Operating Officer Kristin Michael to attend School Board meetings in the absence of the Superintendent effective through December 31st, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Sherwood? Absolutely, sorry, pause. Ms. Silverman?
Should this be until June 30th for the new, is this, is this the School Board designating, or is this the Superintendent appointing somebody of his or her choice, and after June 30th, it might be somebody different? Just for clarification.
Look to Dr. Noonan.
Sorry.
Good question, no, good question, Ms. Silverman.
I’m in the weeds on this.
When asked, I have always named the Chief Operating Officer Kristin Michael as my designee. You certainly could change that on June 30th and come back and revote with a new Superintendent, or if, but ultimately, it’s, you’re voting, to answer your question more pointedly, you’re voting on my selection for who fills in for me.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Ms. Silverman?
Yeah, I just, I wouldn’t be opposed to changing that until June 30th, just to allow for the new Superintendent to choose the person of his or her choice, or we just leave it as is, and then if that person chooses somebody other than Kristin Michael, who is fabulous, this is nothing against Ms. Michael, that we can just amend it at that time, either way is fine.
Okay, does anyone have a preference on the Board, either to wait until, oh, Trish, sorry, Trish, oh, sorry, Ms. Minson?
You’re required by Virginia Code to have a designee in this position, so I would recommend doing it until December 31st, or at least until far enough in July that the Board would have a meeting, because you wouldn’t want to have a time where you don’t have a designee. A new Superintendent could recommend a different designee, and that could be voted down at the next meeting that the Superintendent presides over, but I would respectfully suggest that you keep it as is now, there’s nothing preventing you from changing that next month, next year, or sometime mid-year.
Thank you, Ms. Minson, we’ll go with that recommendation, then. Yeah, any issues with that, Ms. Silverman?
No, that’s fine, and this just came to my mind as we were reading it just now, so thank you for that clarification.
No, thank you. All right, so let’s do the first motion again, please. Do I have a motion? Who made the motion, the initial motion? Ms. Henderson, okay, do I have a second? Ms. Tice, Vice Chair Tice, all in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And finally, 2.07, approval and adoption of the 2025 School Board Code of Civility. Ms. Tice?
I move that the School Board approves the adoption of the 2025 School Board Code of Civility as presented.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice, do I have a second? Ms. Sherwood, thank you, all in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right, that ends the organizational part of our meeting, I appreciate everybody hanging in there. Now we’re going to move on to Section 3, Recognitions and Reports, and this is the main act. Dr. Noonan, 3.01, Superintendent’s Proposed FY26 Budget, we’ll turn it over to you.
I was walking away, sorry about that. Good evening, Chair Gould, Vice Chair Tice, School Board Members, Community Members, and Guests and Parents, we’re glad you’re here this evening. I only present from the podium once a year, and it’s always on the budget, and I think it’s indicative of the importance of a budget to be able to step away from the dais and to be able to talk about, talk about our budget. So thank you, first and foremost, for the opportunity this evening to be able to share this year’s Superintendent’s Proposed FY26 Proposed Budget. Before I start the presentation, though, I would like to thank a few people that have been absolutely instrumental in the development of this budget, and the first is our Chief Operating Officer Kristin Michael, thank you Kristin for your incredible work, and also Michelle Kopic, our Budget Director, who also have both burned sort of the midnight oil, making sure that we have a really good budget to bring you, and I’m pleased to say tonight that we have what I think is a good budget to bring you. I was a little bit nervous leading up to this evening, but through the really extraordinary work of Ms. Michael and Ms. Kopic, we’ve been able to navigate and negotiate our way through this budget. Also want to take a second to recognize our Principals and our Directors that are in the room. It is, it is always nice to have folks that are here to support this work, and the rest of the leadership team as well. This budget was not done in isolation, this budget was done in combination and in collaboration with our leadership team, our Principals, our Directors, our teachers, and paraprofessionals, and many of our folks within each of the departments as well. So what I’m preparing, or what we’ve prepared for you this evening really is a broad-based, well-vetted budget through the system. So, so I’m going to try to slow down a little bit tonight, and part of the reason that I want to slow down is I’m reminded in some ways of what a budget is, and what a budget is, is a budget really is a story. And when I consider our story here in the city of Falls Church, I am sort of reminded of one of my favorite movies, and that is Field of Dreams, and that, that is the movie for me that comes to mind, and, and the line in the movie that I think really resonates for me is, “If you build it, they will come.” So in the movie, in case you’re not familiar, there is a farm in Iowa where a farmer builds a beautiful baseball field, and the ghosts of baseball legends come, people like Shoeless Joe Jackson, we’ve got the Chicago Black Sox as the example, and so how does that relate to Falls Church City Public Schools, or Falls Church City in and of itself? We have built something very special here in, in the city of Falls Church through an incredible partnership between the School Board and the City Council, through the development that has come in, and through the extraordinary work of the staff on our schools, and like Ray Kinsella, played by Kevin Costner in the movie, I couldn’t be more excited to be part of this Field of Dreams. We knew that all of this development was going to happen, we were prepared for it, we have great facilities, and now, as the story continues, we have a need to fund what happens in our buildings to continue the legacy of our Field of Dreams here in the city of Falls Church. So what this budget is, is a no-frills budget, it’s a kind of keep-the-lights-on budget. It pays our great staff, it helps them be retained, it helps us to hire staff to accommodate our growing population, and is truly what I would consider a needs-based budget. What is, what it is not tonight, like perhaps we’ve had in the past, is a budget that expands programs, that grows programs, or is in any way additive to our system. In fact, this budget is really lean, and is meant truly to meet the very fundamental requirements of the Superintendent, which is to prepare and to present a needs-based budget. So thank you for your continued support of our schools and your relationship with the City Council. For the last six years, as, as I’ve previewed before, we have met the spirit of the revenue-sharing agreement, or handshake agreement that we’ve developed between the Superintendent and the City Manager, the City Council, and the School Board. But as I stood here last year and presented the school budget, I did share that I was worried, I was worried about this year, kind of coming up, because I knew that it was going to be challenging for us with the growth in the city to be able to stay within the revenue-sharing agreement. And this year’s request, just to put it out there as plainly as I possibly can, exceeds the amount needed through the revenue share, but the good news is that we are relatively close. It’s a really small amount in the grand scheme of things, and represents what would be considered a half cent on the tax rate. This is remarkably better than we anticipated in the December meeting, as many of you know, and part of that is because state revenue has come in better than we expected. We made some decisions last year, along with the School Board, and you should be very proud of the work that you’ve done, to reserve some of the state funding that we received last year, to pour it forward into this year without spending it, so we could get a running start, if you will, on this year’s budget, knowing it would be tough, and there are some additional salary laps that we’ve been able to achieve this year. And so all of this to say is that I’m presenting to you a needs-based budget that is very close to guidance. Guidance was 5.9%, when you look at the amount necessary for us to fund our needs-based budget, the final percentage needed from the general government and City Council would be 6.3%. So when we think about our team, right, this is our dream team of leaders here in our, in our Field of Dreams, and I want to, I want to take just a second to thank all of you on the School Board and thank our Council. For the last six years, I’m sorry to say to our paper man friend in the room, we’ve had some pretty boring budgets. We’ve met the guidance, and this year I would like it to be just as boring as it’s been in the past, but this is in some ways sort of an inflection point for the city of Falls Church Schools. We believe that this is a one-year issue for us to sort of work through with our colleagues on the City Council and with our colleagues on the general government, and in the end, I would say that I am committed, just like all of you, to continue the revenue-sharing agreement that’s been in place, because it’s predictable, it’s non-confrontational, and it’s easy to understand. We are very special in many ways in the city of Falls Church because of the extraordinary relationship between the School Board and the City Council, you do a great job of not making each other look bad, and, and together, we’re always able to find ways to fund the schools and also fund the city, and I think this year is no different. So speaking of dreamy, we are, we have together built an incredible Field of Dreams here in the city of Falls Church as a school district. These are niche rankings, so take them for what they were worth, they are rankings that people look at when it comes to buying real estate and investing in our community, but again, for the sixth year in a row, Falls Church City Public Schools has been named the number-one school division in Virginia. We’ve also been named the number-two school district in the greater DC area, and in Virginia, we’re the third-best place to teach. And last year, or two years ago, we’re very fortunate to have gotten an award from the Washington Post about, again, being a really awesome place to come and work, and we have the very best teachers because of that. Some of the highlights around the work that we do are always affiliated with the International Baccalaureate Program, and what you’ll see here tonight on the screen are some of those highlights that we’re starting to engage in again this year. Many of us that are presenting tonight, or that are sitting around the room, have PYP groups, exhibition groups, that we’re working with on a routine basis to prepare them for their exhibitions, we have our NYPD students that are working on their projects, our seniors are working on their CAS and their extended essays, right?
We’re done.
Hey, hey, we’re done, awesome. So we’ve got a lot of things happening relative to the International Baccalaureate Program and the continuum highlights, and it really does speak in many ways to who we are. Just to share a little bit more detail about our, our work, this past year, 276 students took IB exams, there were 941 exams written for IB, which is extraordinary in 35 subjects. We had a 92% pass rate, and last year we had 64 IB diploma candidates, and of those 64, 59 of those students passed and earned the IB diploma. This year, by contrast, we have 74, 10 more students that are IB diploma candidates, and hopefully we will have the same success rate as we’ve had in the past. Those numbers are extraordinary and represent the high-water mark for the city of Falls Church Schools, and, and that is not to suggest that an IB diploma is the be-all and the end-all in any way, but it is a marker of great success for many of our students who have truly engaged at the deepest and most rigorous level that we have to offer. So in terms of accreditation highlights, you’ve seen these before, I won’t go through them all, but all of our numbers with respect to accreditation are over 90% relative to the SOL scores, we had 8% increase over last year at Oak Street Elementary in Science, which was great, and at Mary Ellen Henderson, our math reporting groups, nine out of the nine reporting categories remained at or above, well, at 100%. So we are, we’re very proud of that. So what is our North Star as a division? We have two slides in here about the strategic plan, and simply it’s, they’re there just to remind the Board that we are in the third year of our strategic, five-year strategic plan. We’ve been making incredible gains on much of the work that’s in there, and I would invite anyone who’s listening tonight to go to the website, look up strategic plan, and you can see for yourself some of the things that we’ve been doing that have been pretty, pretty amazing. So when we look at the five areas of emphasis, these are the five areas of emphasis, IB teaching and learning, wellness equity and belonging, resource management and improvement, communication and engagement, and investing in our people. These five categories are extraordinarily important in the budget process, because everything that you’ll find in this budget has been aligned to our strategic plan. That is a, not just a hallmark or a feature of our budget, it’s actually a requirement of our budget, and, and when our staff come forward with actions that they need money for, we always ask them, how does this tie to our strategic focus? So I want to thank again our Principals that are in the room and our Directors in the room, because each of them held meetings with their respective staff in October, starting in October, to allow for input across the entire division about our, our school budget. Which takes us to enrollment. So let’s talk a little bit about enrollment. We are, again, I shared earlier, we’re at a high-water mark for International Baccalaureate Diploma Candidates this year, but we’re also at a high-water mark for enrollment in Falls Church City Public Schools. On November, November 30th, the enrollment was 2,713, that exceeded our previous high-water mark of, of earlier in the 2017-18 school year of 2,698. Again, we, we knew these kids were coming, we are so excited to have them, we have the infrastructure necessary to serve these students that we’re receiving, but what we are asking for tonight are the resources to meet the growing population and its needs. So when we talk about needs, what I’m sharing with you tonight are the, a number of different service groups that we, that we attend to, that are important to think about. So what you’ll see here tonight are, in the top four categories are economically disadvantaged students, these are students that are traditionally on free and reduced lunch, we have students with disabilities, students with 504, and those are students that have been identified with an IEP or an Individual Education Plan, a student with a 504 plan, so meaning that a student may have some form of disability, but it doesn’t rise to the level of needing an IEP, and then our English speakers of other languages, these are our ESOL students. The reason that I’m sharing these with you is if you look at the column from change to the prior, from the prior year, you will see a positive growth in all four of those reporting categories of economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, 504, and ESOL. And in sheer numbers, what we are looking at is a higher and greater need in our system because we have more diverse learners that necessitate additional services, and that, and the reason that we’re pointing this out is because of the additional staffing that is also required to meet the needs of our diverse groups of students. So, so where do we get our, our numbers for projections? Everyone in this room, and hopefully at home, is familiar with the Weldon Cooper Center, this is the University of Virginia Center, where they look at demographics. The Weldon Cooper Center has been a great stalwart for the city of Falls Church for many, many years, and that was prior to when we started to expand some of our housing stock and some of our housing, housing development here in the city. And the reason that they were good up to that point is that Weldon Cooper looks at two things, they look at birth rates, and they look at grade progressions from one grade to the other. They do not take into account the development that’s happening in the city of Falls Church. So two years ago, we were fortunate enough to partner with the general government, and we hired together the Stephen Fuller Institute, and they began to develop a projection methodology that has been very successful for us. It’s a much better solution, given the renaissance that truly is happening in the city of Falls Church. So working alongside Stephen Fuller Institute, having them dig into what’s happening in the city of Falls Church relative to the work and development, we have some very good, a much better idea of what we can expect when it comes to our student population coming out of the housing developments. So speaking of housing developments, these are the four big ones that we are really looking at and paying attention to, because this is where we’re going to see some yields from, of students. The first is Founder’s Row, and Founder’s Row has opened and has completely stabilized at this point, meaning that it is almost at 100% occupancy, and we know how many students are going to be coming out of there. And, and now that we have pretty much full occupancy at Founder’s Row 1, and knowing that we have students that are coming out of there, that number is going to stay fairly static over time, give or take, you know, a certain percentage of students. However, there are two, three other, excuse me, housing developments that are continuing to be built, and the first is the West Falls Church site, up at the high school. This is the, the big Kahuna, if you will, and this is going to, has opened Q3, Q4 of 2024, and it does look like it’s going to stabilize in the winter of this, of this year. So in December, January, we should have a pretty good sense of the number of kids that will be coming out of there that should remain fairly static over the course of the, the life cycle of the, of those buildings. The development at Broad in Washington opened in June of 2024, and it is starting to fill up, and we anticipate that that will stabilize this summer, so we should have a pretty good sense of how many students are coming out of there in the long term as well. And lastly, Founder’s Row 2 is going to successfully open, we hope, in September of 2025, with a stabilization in the spring of 2027. a stabilization in the spring of 2027. So we are, we are not home yet, if you will, in, in that we know that there are still folks that are moving into the city, folks that are going to be filling the West Falls, the Broad and Washington project, and the Founder's Row 2. So, so we have to use our best information to determine what are the generation rates based on the housing types that we're seeing. So these numbers come from Stephen Fuller Institute, and I'll just call your attention to the last column in the upper right quadrant. So if you look at 2025, these are enrollment rates for the Falls Church housing projects and homes for 2024, excuse me, 2024. SFD stands for single-family dwelling. And we know that single-family dwellings that are going up right now are yielding a .7, which means that for every two, let's do it this way, every four units, you're going to end up getting two students out of each of those four single-family homes. Relative to the condos and the apartments, each condo yields about a .25 student, meaning every four condos that are developed, we will get one, one student out of that, every condo and apartment. And then townhomes will be yielding .38. So for every three townhomes or so, we should anticipate one student. So we took all of that into account, and Stephen Fuller Institute gave us a really great sense of what our numbers are going to look like going forward. So here is the enrollment forecast in a line graph for you. There are three lines that I want to just sort of call your attention to. The first is the blue line that says 2714. That is the Weldon Cooper number. It does not take into account any of the new development here in the city. The yellow line is 2,873, which takes into account all of the development that's happening and uses, uses those yield ratios to determine how many students we should expect. And then the gray line represents pre-pandemic growth conditions in combination with the new development. So were we to continue growing at the same rate we were growing pre-pandemic with all of the new construction coming online, we should, we should anticipate really close to 3,000 students for next year. However, because the pandemic happened, we did see some decline in the city, we saw some decline in the schools. We haven't returned to the same growth rate as previously, previous to the pandemic, but we are growing quickly. So we are using the Stephen Fuller Institute number as our watermark, if you will, or our, our point, our waypoint for 2025, and are anticipating 2,873 students. So when you look at this chart, and these are all online, all of these materials will be online, so anyone can look at them. We, we, again, if you look at 2025, which is the second year column from the left, you will see by grade level, the total of 2873. And that is what we're expecting for next year's class. So what does that look like by grade level? And, and here you will see it by grade level. This, this chart can get a little bit confusing and a little bit complicating, simply because it's also a grade progression chart. So you might look at this and go, well, why are we losing 21 students at Oak Street in third grade? And the reason that we would be losing 21 students in third grade at Oak Street in third grade is because the second grade was smaller than the current third grade. So the smaller second grade progresses to third grade, the bigger third grade moves on to fourth grade. But the number that's really important on this slide is in the bottom right-hand corner. And that is the 159. This is the number of additional students that we are anticipating will be in Falls Church next year. I want to try to provide an example that might make it a little bit more understandable for those folks that might be watching at home. So what does 159 students mean to the City of Falls Church Schools? 159 students is just like having another grade level in our school division. So if you look at our FY25 actuals at Mount Daniel, and you will go across to FY25 actual, you'll see that this year, we had 159 kindergarteners. We have seven teachers in kindergarten teaching those 159 students. So if we add another 159 students to our population, we need additional resources, particularly in teachers and staff, to be able to meet the needs of our students that are coming in. So if we were not to add any more students, it would be like teaching a 13th or 14th grade level in our division with the same number of teachers. So in the budget, what you'll see and hear tonight is an equivalent to that level of staffing for instruction. But adding kids is more than just adding teachers, right? I think everybody here understands that. We also need to add bus services, we need to add bus aides, we need to add materials, we need to add counselors, specialists, et cetera, to ensure that our field of dreams remains dreamy. So when we look at it by school, here is where we're seeing where our school populations look like they're going to shake out because the 159 kids don't actually all come in one night, nice neat grade level. They do get across all of the, all of the grades. And so what you'll see is that Mount Daniel is going to grow by about 52 students, Oak Street is going to lose about 18 students, Henderson is going to grow by 55, and the high school is going to grow by 66. So the largest amount of population growth that we're going to see this coming year actually will be on the secondary campus. So hopefully, that sets the stage for kind of where we're headed, respective of our budget. So let's move on to the proposed budget revenue. And this is where the picture actually gets a little bit better than we anticipated it was going to be. So the guidance from the Falls Church City Council earlier this year was that they would like to reduce the tax rate, hold it steady, or increase the tax rate. So there was sort of a wide swath of options that the city council provided. And through the budget process that we're going through right now, they endeavor, like we do, to determine what the needs are and fund those needs appropriately. And so through the great conversations that you all have had with your council partners, and we have already had with our general government partners, we're confident that this budget is imminently doable. So the 2025 guidance that we received this year in December from the general government and the city council was looking at our tax, tax growth revenue, looking at a 5.9% increase year over year, which equates to 5.9 million additional dollars that ultimately is split twice, once by the general government and once by the schools. Meaning that the school's portion of that revenue share would be $2.9 million. When we look at the needs-based budget that we have, we actually have a need in this budget that I'm going to share with you this evening of an additional $3.3 million. So there is a delta there of less than $400,000. That's about how close we are, and I'll share that as we move along. So here's, here's some of the good news. The good news is that last year, as I mentioned earlier, this board made a really good decision, and that was to set aside the FY25 state funding that came late. You might remember that the, the, the state legislature needed to go into special session to pass their budget. They did. We got state funding after the, the budget for the schools had been adopted. And therefore, when the state funding came in, we'd met our obligations, and we said, before we spend any of that money, let's take a pause, let's put it aside, and let's get ready for next year. So we received $545,000 from the state last year. We did spend a little bit of it, but that is additional funding that's available to us in this year's budget. Additionally, based on the governor's budget that came out on December 18th, we are going to see an increase in sales tax by $289,000 and an increase in, in, I'm sorry, in state aid and in sales tax of $535,000. So when you take all of that into combination, we're looking at about a $1.2 million amount of money that would come from the state that's available for us to use in this year's budget. And of that, about $800,000 is in new money from this year's, this year's state budget. So that is more than we anticipated, and we're very excited and very pleased with that. Some other revenues to kind of consider, and just as a reminder to the board and to the community, there are really three places that we get money. First is from our locality, the second is from the state, and the third is from our federal government. So you'll see here in terms of federal revenue, we are anticipating a cut in federal revenue of a, a small amount, $1,799. However, when you go back to that slide that I was sharing about the students with disabilities, students with 504s, our ESOL students, and our students in poverty, many of those title programs are specifically designed through the federal government to pay for services for those students. The reason that it's not showing up in this year's budget is because the federal government works a year behind. So they are not looking forward, like we are, prospectively of what, about what we're expecting, but they will take our numbers from this year and fund next year's budget based on this year's numbers. So they're always one year behind in terms of the federal dollars coming in. So when we look at the overall revenue picture, what you'll see here is a, a very nice handy-dandy pie chart that shows that 80.3% of our FCCPS budget, we are asking, come from the local government. 16% comes from the state, 1% comes from the federal government. We have some fees and other services, and then we also have some beginning balance that we put into the budget each year. Of note, and I, I think this is an important thing to sort of get our heads around a little bit because we've talked about diversifying our, our budget just a little bit. This is the first time that I'm aware of that actually the city portion of the funding for the school's budget is less than what it's been in the past. So you'll see, last year, for example, the, the general government's and city council's portion of our budget was 80.9%. This year, this year, we're looking at 80.3%. And the reason that that number has dropped a little bit is because our state revenues have gone up. So the pie has just shifted a little bit more towards the state revenue. So what do we anticipate we're going to spend our, our additional funds on? So let me start with what we're calling contractual obligations. And let me just say this, yes, we, we have a collective bargaining agreement in place with our teachers and with our support staff, but that CBA does not drive in any way our budget discussions that we've had internally. And the reason for that is because for the past 60, six years, it hasn't mattered. We've worked diligently on behalf of our employees to make sure that we're compensating them appropriately through a step and through a cost of living adjustment. It is incumbent upon us, I believe, to compensate our excellent staff, to ensure that we can recruit the best, we can retain the best that are out there. And this budget represents a full step for all of our employees plus a 2.5% COLA for all employees. In the end, I believe that this amount of compensation increase, which is roughly 5% for everyone, will ultimately be sort of the middle of the pack in the region and in surrounding jurisdictions. But the good news is that this board, or many on this board, a couple of years ago, did a comprehensive salary study. And through that salary study, we were able to make some adjustments a couple of years ago that put us on really good footing. So we, we still feel like even with the 5% increase with the step and the COLA, we are going to be in good stead, stead, when it comes to recruitment and retaining our excellent staff. Which then leads us to our next big sort of pot, if you will, of expenditures, and that is enrollment growth. We are anticipating that we need to spend about $1.1 million to meet the enrollment growth. And some of the highlights that you'll see around the ring here are four and a half additional general ed classroom teachers, one additional special education teacher, an additional paraprofessional, a primary years program coordinator, which I'll talk about in just a second, an additional school counselor, halftime athletic director, which I'll also talk about in just a second, a parent resource and engagement specialist for Mount Daniel to serve our students whose home language is other than English, looking at adding an additional two bus driver aides, an additional bus driver, and then supplies. We have a defined pot of supplies, and as more students come in, that pot only goes so far. So we need to widen the pot to allow for all of our students to have access to both instructional supplies and athletic materials and supplies. So let me just take a second to talk about a couple of things that are up here that I, I've gotten some questions about, and you may also have gotten some questions about. And the first is the assistant athletic director. We have more students participating in athletics and activities than we've ever had at Meridian High School and at Mary Ellen Henderson because we do allow our eighth graders to participate in clubs and activities and in many of our sports as well. The money that's in this budget, which is $65,000, really represents the amount needed to make a full-time assistant director of student activities at the high school. Right now, that DSA, our Director of Student Activities, is supported sort of by committee. There are a couple of people that come in and support that person who are paid. And then when you, if, if we were to take those funds that are currently being used for those folks that are doing it by committee and cobble it together with the 65 additional thousand dollars here, we have enough to afford a 1.0 Assistant Director of Student Activities. That would put two full-time people in that office and would really help, I think, sort of stabilize, not that it's destabilized now, but really help us sort of moving forward, particularly as we move into getting a new Director of Student Activities at the high school into the future. The PYP coordination position, this is the only position that, that is sort of an expansion that, that is in the budget because the ADSA position is kind of there, and it's kind of cobbled together. This IB coordinator position at the primary years really comes out of our IB reauthorization visitation that we had a couple of years ago. When we had the visitation, there was a recommendation from IB that we consider adding a second elementary IB PYP coordinator. The reason for that is that we added, as part of our process, Jesse Thackeray Preschool to the IB to fill out the continuum, so we really are pre-K through 12. So that, that person, and I'll, I'll name her, it's Lauren Carpel, she's pretty amazing. And she goes from Jesse Thackeray Preschool to Mount Daniel to Oak Street and sees over 1,000 students throughout her, her week. This job is simply untenable for one person. As I stated at the, earlier in the presentation, one of the things that is our North Star is our strategic plan. And in our strategic plan is IB teaching and learning. So when I think back to tying some of the requests that we have in our budget to our strategic plan, I think about this position really speaking to our identity of who we are as a school division. And this would not be done lightly. I believe that this would be the final investment at the school level for supporting our IB program. It would put two at the elementary, we have our middle school PYP, or middle school MYP coordinator, and we have a DP coordinator. This is the, now the third year that this position actually is on the docket. And if not for the, and I'll just sort of put it out there, if not for the one cent reduction that we took last year, this was the position that we were going to fund with that one cent reduction that we ended up taking last year. And that came through a, a very broad conversation with our staff. So, so it's made its way back in again. Which leads us to current obligations. These are essentially maintenance of effort kinds of positions that we have in place that I am, I'm suggesting that we maintain. There are a couple of, a couple in here that I think are really important, well, I think they're all important, but a couple that I want to call out, specifically the ESOL teaching position. We are growing in ESOL. That position is currently funded through one-time funds. We would like to make that position a permanent position. This would do that. Additionally, we do have an advanced academic coordinator that's part-time, that takes a ton off the plate of our advanced academic teachers, to the extent that that person's doing a lot of the testing, a lot of the identification work, that allows those advanced academic teachers to be working directly with kids. And then lastly, the position of legal services that's in here, I do not want to in any way diminish our incredible Ms. Minson, but she has an incredible amount of work when it comes to contracts, FOIA, FERPA, ESMANSK. It's just too much for one person. So by adding this, this part-time position would really allow Ms. Minson to continue to do her really great work. And we are currently paying for these positions. Again, this is a maintenance of effort. It would make that legal position more permanent and, and just still part-time. So those are the, those are the things that we would like to spend our money on. That being said, we also want to take a, take a minute and just say that we did our part as well. We didn't just take the extra and spend, right? We really felt like it was important for us to take some reductions and look at where we could do some, have some savings as well. we could have some savings as well. So the first place that we have found some savings is in salary lapse. And salary lapse, just to remind everyone, is turnover in salary. So for example, if we have a teacher who's been with us for 30 years and is at the top of the scale and has a master's degree, they're going to make X number of dollars. When that person retires and we bring somebody new in, and let's just say we hire somebody that has five years' experience in a master's, there's a delta between those two salaries. When that delta happens, that money is recaptured into our budget and we're able to use that for recurring purposes, and it's called salary lapse. And over the course of the last year, we've actually gained some salary lapse that has been rather significant. So we are looking at about $544,000 in additional salary lapse that we can pour back into the budget to help meet and offset some of the costs of the things that I've discussed earlier. Additionally, we are looking at redesigning our summer school program. And I want to assure everyone on this board and that may be listening at home tonight that there are a couple of things that will absolutely stay. One is our extended school year. Because it's part of students' IEPs, we will absolutely continue to do ESY, or our extended school year for our students that need it as part of their IEP. Additionally, we are absolutely committed to meeting the relatively small number of students that need intervention during the summer. We're just looking at finding a way to do it and see this as an opportunity to do it in a much more effective and a much more efficient way than we've done it in the past. And lastly, we want to make sure that everyone understands that students that are at the high school that are doing credit recovery and credit extension through our high C program will still have that opportunity. So when we look at the numbers of students that we served through our summer school program last year, across the entire division, we have about 156 students that needed intervention throughout the summer. So our really great instructional team, along with some school-based folks, are looking at ways that we will be able to redesign and support those students in need in a very different way that actually we believe will be much more effective and much more efficient. And then lastly, in terms of reductions, we are seeing a reduction in the cost to provide the transitional retirement program. This is a legacy retirement program that's been in place for a very long time that was meant to incentivize people to retire many moons ago, and we're seeing those people starting to come off the rolls. So our commitment, our financial obligation to that retirement program is dropping by $20,000. So when we look at all of those reductions together, it's about a $683,000 additional amount that we can pour into the budget. So when you look at our proposed budget, what you'll see is our contract obligations, our enrollment growth, our current obligations minus the reductions is $4.6 million, and not surprisingly, that matches exactly the amount that we have available to us to spend. So where are we spending our money? This is one of my favorite slides every year, and it's one of my favorites because it really speaks to who we are as a school division. We currently spend 85.4% of our budget in employee compensation. That means that we're putting the vast majority of our money that we have available to us into our people. Additionally, we do have to spend money on utilities, insurance, and travel and the like. Capital replacements and transfers are also available to us as part of the expenditures, but the vast majority of our money does go into people. So knowing that we are exceeding the revenue sharing agreement by $347,000, there are a couple of places that we feel like it was important for us to preview for you of where we would go should the decision be made not to fully fund the schools by providing the additional revenue. And the first thing we would do is we would, because we have to, provide through one-time funding for the private day programs for students with IEPs. And additionally, we would provide additional funding for textbooks. Those are things we just cannot do without that are absolutely vital and critical to our mission. Again, the areas that we did look at potentially expanding or growing, if there is any in this budget, are in the PYP coordinator position, the athletic materials and supplies, and then also parent resources and the engagement specialist. Those would be the places that we actually would cut, and those would be the equivalent of about $189,000 in those two positions and then that material account to get us to the $347,000. Now, I want to say I see some really nice opportunities ahead. When I think about this budget, you know, Ms. Michael and I were talking before the meeting, and I didn't think I would ever say this about this budget, but it's actually a nice budget. It's a pretty good budget. And part of the reason that it's a good budget is because we're really close in terms of the amount of money necessary to fully fund our budget. And the opportunities that I see that potentially can offset this delta of $347,000 that are really within our grasp in many ways, depending on how things break, is, one, healthcare. We always have to estimate a 10% increase in healthcare, and there are years where healthcare costs don't go up 10%. So we've built that into our budget for a 10% increase, but if it doesn't come in at 10%, whatever comes in under that 10% is money that can also help offset this $347,000. Another way that we could potentially bring this delta down is if the growth in the city over the next quarter increases. There have been years in the past where, at the end of the budget, we have found out, you know what, there's a little more revenue than we thought there was going to be. So that may be another opportunity for us if that happens again. A third is, we're following very closely legislative action on the support cap. We learned today that the, taking the support cap off that we've talked a lot about, made it out of committee, five to three. Five to three indicates there's some headwinds ahead of us, but it did make its way out of committee, and there's going to be a bill on the floor of the legislature to get rid of the support cap. If that support cap is voted on, we would get more money from the state, which would be a possibility that could also drive down that delta of $347,000. Another option, I certainly won't speak or even suggest to speak for our council colleagues, but knowing that the amount is $347,000, perhaps the council would consider a point five special assessment for schools that could sunset in two years as a possibility. Or another option could be that we revisit the revenue share for this year only, and perhaps instead of a 50-50 split, maybe there's a different split so we can pick up that $347,000. So there's a lot of different ways that we think we can get there, but we're not there yet, and it's going to continue to take conversation, it's going to take advocacy, and it's going to take work on all our parts to sort of make it happen. But the good news is the delta is much, much smaller than we thought it was going to be, particularly when we came together for the first time in December. So in closing, you know, Virginia mandates that I provide to you a needs-based budget, and I hope that I've done that this evening. This budget does reflect our highest priorities and the needed investments to support our students and is representative of our collective needs as a school division. Yes, our request does exceed organic growth for the first time in six years, but again, we've been planning for this growth, and now we just need to make sure that we get the resources necessary to take care of our kids inside the building. Overall, this budget does represent a 7.4% increase over last year, and the reason for that additional percentage is because we're including state revenue in there as well. So it's local revenue and state revenue ultimately results in a 7.4% increase. So tonight, we're asking the school board to consider this thoughtful and needs-based budget. We're asking the city council to take a hard look at our needs based on our growth, and ultimately, asking both elected bodies to continue your work together to keep our Field of Dreams great. Before I share my final slides, I just want to say, one of my favorite actors in the movie The Field of Dreams is James Earl Jones, of course, who plays Terrence Mann, and you might remember at the end of the movie what Terrence Mann does. He steps over the line and he becomes part of the team that's on the field and is no longer on the sidelines of The Field of Dreams. It's a little bit of an analogy to me, or metaphor in some ways, in that this is my last budget that I'll get a chance to present to you all. I feel really good about it, and when you adopt the budget to become the school board's budget in March, I will then step over the line and I will become one of the players on the field and a parent in the community and watch what happens with the budget while I'm still here. So with that, let me just share with you the preliminary budget calendar. The next big action for all of you is the adoption of the advertised budget, and that happens on March 11th, and that will be an important date. There will be work sessions between now and then that happen that will all be focused on the budget. Which leads me to my last slide that I want to take just a second to talk about, and this is really more about budget questions. Some of it's a reminder for our former school board members, some of this might be new for our new school board member, and that is that we are absolutely committed to making sure that we answer all of the budget questions that come to us. So what we ask is that each of you submit your budget questions in writing, submit them to me with a copy to the chair and to the vice chair. I will take those, and Kristin and I will work together to fan those out to the appropriate folks that need to answer those questions, and from there, we will catalog those by number and provide those to you at work sessions. So last year, I think we had somewhere around 54 budget questions, maybe the year before we had 50 budget questions, but we end up cataloging them by number so that we can always refer back to them. So if you wouldn't mind, as you're thinking about your questions, to submit those in writing so that we can put those together as part of our catalog. And so with that, let me just wrap up here and just say that, you know, we have worked on your behalf very diligently to craft a budget that reflects what we believe are the school system's greatest needs collectively. We're super grateful for the support that the school board and the city council have always given to us to support our students, to support our staff, support our schools, and ultimately to support our community. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation and just say that tonight really is a presentation, but I'm certainly happy to answer any high-level questions you have, but detailed questions we would prefer to take kind of in that vein of questions that we'll work through at each of the school board work sessions. And so thank you very much for your time and attention, and I'll turn it back to Chair Gould, and I'll stand here and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Nunez.
Nobody's ever clapped for me for a budget before.
No, and the clapping obviously is for this budget, but I think we all recognize the years of the budget process that you have helped create while you've been here in terms of the positive relationships that you've developed with your counterpart, Wyatt Shields, and also with the city council and the school board, trying to make sure that we are walking through this process that many localities experience very with a lot of animosity and a lot of gamesmanship, and you've set us into a culture where we try to work together, we try to partner with each other in terms of the city council, and we try to do this in terms of what's best for the schools, what's best ultimately for our students, and reflect the values of our city. So we appreciate the years that you've been able to do this and put us on the right path. So I think, I'm speaking for maybe more people in the room, but that's probably why some of the clapping also, we're in a good place, so thank you very much.
Keep it boring.
Yes, keep it boring. Sorry, Nick. Okay, and obviously, a huge thank you, Ms. Kupick, Ms. Michael. You're going to be hearing that every single meeting, but for the members of the public, the process that we go through, the transparency, the question and the organization of how we do this is not just organized for us, but really the public can pull in, jump in, find out where their questions are going to be asked. The detail of all the budget that Dr. Nunez presented is going to be available for the public. Mr. Brett has a page that he's created for the budget for 2025, or 2026, actually, and so this process is continued. We always hear great, positive compliments about how you all do this for the public, and so we're looking forward to navigating this with you all. So with that, I think, Dr. Nunez, I appreciate the last slide about the process. So as you said, just to say it back to you, we're going to ask kind of high-level questions, but to make sure if there's any detailed questions, we're going to email you so then we can start to capture that in that formal process, and we'll start that organic document of numbered questions. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Okay, with that, I'll open it up to fellow colleagues, Ms. Silverman.
Thank you, Dr. Gould, and Dr. Nunez, thank you very much for this presentation and to your team for this tremendous effort once again. I have a couple of questions, well, I guess questions. One is on the CBA. I really appreciated your comments that the CBA is not the culprit, for lack of a better term, or the cause of having some sort of budget shortfall. As you said, we've tried to do those exact things in every single year that you've been here, and I know that, I really appreciate that, I'm sure the teachers and staff really appreciate that. If we can just dig a little bit deeper on that topic, just so the people understand really why that's true, what does the CBA require us to do contractually?
There are a number of things that are-
Financially, just the raises in COLA.
Yeah, oh, step in COLA, yeah. So in the CBA, we negotiated, and to be honest, I mean, I'll just say it out loud, it was sort of low-hanging fruit, right? To be able to give a step and a cost-of-living adjustment to our employees, because we've always done it, with the exception of the very first year I was here, seven years ago, we could only do a COLA, but we've done a step and a COLA for the last six years. And the way in the CBA it's written is that everyone gets a step, and then everyone gets a cost-of-living adjustment that is aligned to the CPI, Consumer Price Index, based on the October 15th date, which is also the date that they take it for Social Security.
Great. So you've done that every, except for minus your first year here, every year that you've been here, that has been the case, so that it would have happened, and that's not the cause of this shortfall or lack of $350,000-ish?
No, not at all. In fact, we've actually done it, we haven't tied the cost-of-living adjustment to the CPI previously. This is the first year we're doing that, and because inflation has gone down, the CPI actually has gone down, so this cost-of-living adjustment, while it's in line with what's happening economically in the community, actually represents in some ways a lower cost-of-living adjustment than we've provided in the past over a couple of years.
And secondly, explain what neighboring jurisdictions are doing. Are they also giving steps and COLAs? And is ours, even if we weren't contractually required, would we, and even if we weren't just doing the right thing, we would kind of have to do it in order to stay competitive? Is there truth in that statement?
There's 100% truth in that statement. I can't tell you what my colleagues are doing because we're one of the first jurisdictions to come out publicly with our budget. I will say that they haven't publicly come out. We have had some behind-the-scenes conversations, I don't want to break the confidentiality of my colleagues, but when I suggested that this 5% increase, which is the cost of living and the step together, is going to be middle of the road, it's going to be middle of the road. I think you're going to see, we're going to see some jurisdictions that are giving upwards of 8%, and we're going to see some jurisdictions that will be giving closer to 3%.
Okay. And finally, I do want to go back to the tax cut that we received as a community, the property tax cut, and that was about a $400,000 saving, a tax cut that collectively that the city realized, and so we would have gotten half of that amount, is that correct?
That's correct.
About $200,000, so that, a lot of that money would have really covered this delta that we have in our budget and our needs, is that right?
That's a great question. There are three things in the budget that we were trying to fund last year that didn't end up becoming permanently funded. One was the ESOL position that we continued with one-time money that we're asking to make permanent this year. The second is the school counselor position, which was funded with one-time money that we put in this year's budget to make it permanent, and then the PYP coordinator position, or PYP coordinator position at the school site. Had we received that $200,000, we would have been able to take care of a lot of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that would not have ended up in this year's budget, to your point.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Vice Chair Tice?
Yes, I just had a process question, just to make sure that the board understands what is most productive for you and your team. What is a comfortable deadline for submitting budget questions prior to a work session?
Thank you for asking that question. We really would appreciate getting them on Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, the week before the work session. Anything after Thursday, you know, we bump up against the weekend, it's just really hard for us to get to. But we'll let you know, if we get a question that's particularly complicated, needs more time, we certainly will communicate that with you, but by and large, if we have them on Wednesday or Thursday, we can turn them around by the work session on Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. That makes perfect sense and just, I know we have one new board member and a couple have only done this one time, so if, if you think of a question after that Wednesday or Thursday, it's fine to still submit it, but it might not get answered to the fault, until the following work session or budget session, is that-
100%.
Right, okay.
Please, please feel free to submit them. We will answer, I mean, unless it's a phone call, unless it's something that just doesn't maybe make sense and give us a little latitude too, we might reword it just a little bit to make sure it's really super clear, but you know, ask, ask away and we'll, we'll do our best to answer them.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Other questions, reactions, Ms. Sherwood?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Noonan, for this presentation, it was really helpful and I am very grateful for all the work that you and your colleagues have put into, into putting this together. As, as the newest person here, I have lots of questions, but I'm just going to ask for now, one that came to mind is, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about the one-time funding that you referenced on Slide 34. Where is that usually, where, where does that come from typically?
Let me go back to Slide 34. So the, the one-time funding is, is typically considered carryover money. It's money that has fallen out of the budget from the prior year through either a, a, a position slowdown, we'd, we'd never put a slowdown on a position, but let's say we don't fill a position for two months because we don't have a good candidate, that money that may have been captured during that two months goes into a, a pot that can be used. If we have savings from a utility or we've been able to get a rebate from something, we end up with year-end balance. And then the other place that we end up with year-end balance is through our revenue sharing agreement, when we do the end of year closeout with the general government, as you all may recall, we do typically in the November timeframe, get some amount of money, that's our portion of the year-end balance. So this year we received about $800,000 in year-end balance that can be used for a variety of different purposes.
Any questions, reactions, any points of clarification for process? I have one, we've, we all have the binders, we appreciate that. That is going to go online, it's already there?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, for the public, we do have these three-ring binders. You're going to have the electronic version, you're not going to be able to have a printed version, but yes, you can get that access.
There'll be one in the central office if somebody wants to come by and look at the three, the two-inch three-ring binder.
Okay.
That's totally fine, but every single resource that's in that binder will be online on the budget page.
For the public, perfect, thank you. Yes, Ms. Henderson?
In the binders in this context, always there's contingencies of things that come up that we don't anticipate. Can you explain a little bit about how you budget for those contingencies and where that shows up?
Yeah, it's a great question. We, you know, the carryover money that I was just describing to Ms. Sherwood is sort of our, our savings account, if you will. We do try to, to maintain, we have, we have sort of a, a cap of 2.5% of our budget is sort of what we can carry over and feel good about. That is typically one-time money, so if there is something that comes up that's a contingency that we can spend one-time money on, we will use the one-time money. If there's a contingency that comes up that requires a, a continued payment, let's say we, we need another teacher because our growth went up more than what we anticipated, we do carry a small balance in what we call our, I just, it just slipped out of my head, staffing reserve, if, if there's a need for an additional teacher or, or something like that. And then if in this budget, you feel like there's a contingency that you feel like you need to fund, our request would be if, if you have something else you want to fund, give us an equal or equivalent cut from somewhere and just let us know where that, where you would recommend that that money comes from and then you all can kind of debate, debate the merits of that. Does that answer your question?
So perhaps this will help, inside the book that's posted online and in your binder, there are page numbers on the bottom of each page and in the section on the School Operating Fund, which is in Section 6, just called Operating Fund, at the end of that, there's a chart or a table called Operating Fund Revenue and Expenditures by Object. And what that does is it groups both revenue and expenditures by their type. And when you look at contingencies, you're going to see contingencies in revenue and expenditures. So the expenditure contingencies that Dr. Noonan was just speaking about are on that chart on Page 196, 196 and that section or that category is called Transfers and Reserves and that's where you'll find contingencies budgeted.
That's what I meant to say.
Thank you.
Great questions. Anything else from the board in terms of process or procedure going forward?
Okay, well, it seems like we've got a lot of work ahead of us, we're excited and, and excited to work with you all on this. We know that there's been a lot of, a lot of work, just to remind the public, this, this process started in August, September?
Yeah, September.
September, so, and this was at the school base and it rolled up and, and obviously to thank all the folks on the left side, especially the school leaders and the central office that hear a number of these requests and you probably continue to hear these requests from your staff and especially on a week of principal appreciation week, we do appreciate you all staying here till 8:15 on a Monday night. You guys are troopers to hang in there and we really look forward to, to seeing what you all need to try to support your schools, support your teachers, support your staff and we really appreciate you contributing to this process, so thank you very much.
And, and they're waiting for the magic words of, "We're going to now pivot to the next topic on the agenda."
Yes, thank you all.
Have a great night.
Thanks for coming. Just the folks in the back left, that's it. So sorry, everybody else, I saw John Brett starting to stand up, but, all right. All right, thank you, Dr. Noonan, I appreciate it. All right, now we're going to pivot to the next section of the agenda. We're going to move to Section 4, Public Comments and Requests. And in accordance to, with Public School Board Policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to the three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record, be disposition of requests. Ms. Cadell, do we have any public notices for public comment?
We do not have any notices for public comment tonight, but we did receive four written notices, two on the turf field, one from the coral boosters and one from the athletic boosters.
Okay, so just to repeat, since I don't, you know, two on the baseball, on the turf field-
Turf field, one from coral boosters and one from athletic boosters and that was mostly on staffing.
Athletic booster staffing and coral boosters for those since the microphone. Okay, thanks, Ms. Cadell. So we received four notices, letters received. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on now to closed meeting. Can I please have a motion for closed meeting? Ms. Henderson?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointment, staff reassignment, staff resignation, staff retirement, staff performance, staff change in position, staff separation, dependent care leave, long-term medical care leave, child care leave, request and leave of absence and advisory committee appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed? All right, so we'll go ahead, Dr. Noonan?
Unless anyone has a lot of questions about what's on the agenda, I think we could probably just convene to the back hallway. It's probably a two-minute closed.
Two-minute close, okay.
Unless there's a lot of questions that you have about what's on here.
Everyone's looking down. Yep, I think we'll try it. All right, thank you. We're going to move to close now.
Okay, we are back. We're going to move now to 5.03 reconvened to open meeting. Can I have a motion? Ms. Silverman?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a clo- I'm sorry, I'm still on.
Oh, yeah.
I move that the board reconvene to open meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right. Let's certify the closed meeting, 6.01. Can I please have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Ms. Caddell?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Teis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right, now we're in Section 7 consent agenda. We're going to look for unanimous consent for personnel items, advisory committee appointments, VSBA policy services agreement, and the approval of the 2025 summer daycare fees. Do I have unanimous consent by head nods or great? Thank you. Consent agenda passes. And we'll move on to Section 8, business action and information. Dr. Nune, I think this is to you, 8.01, approval and adoption of CIP FY 2631?
Yes, thank you. We are recommending approval as presented by Brian Fowler at our last regular meeting.
Great. Okay, so we had that discussion last meeting with Mr. Fowler. If there's any final questions or comments before we move to motion? Yes, Ms. Silverman?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Nune, does anything need to be done at Oak Street that needs to be added into CIP? Just from the flood?
Yeah, no, great question. We, first of all, it wasn't a structural issue. We had unfortunately a float in one of our water tanks got stuck open, and as a consequence, it continued just to flow. And ultimately, that's what caused the flood. So it was a malfunction of a float, and that's been taken care of. I don't anticipate that there would be anything beyond that, just for the good of the board as well. We have been working with Versa, our insurance company, for all claims that need to be filed as well. They came on site right away. And then we have, we did use ServePro as the professional cleaning company to make sure that everything was professionally cleaned and dried, to make sure that there wasn't any further fallout. But the float in the, in the water tank has been repaired.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Thanks, Dr. Nune. Any other questions before we move for, I look for a motion for 8.01? Okay. All right, so can I please have a motion for approval and adoption of the CIP? Mr. Anderson?
I move that the school board approve the adoption of the FCCPS FY 2631, a CIP as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Sherwood, thank you. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right. Now we'll move on to 8.02, first reading of cellphone policy. Ms. Minson, straight to you, or, okay, yep, Ms. Minson.
Good evening. We have one policy for first reading this evening, policy JTTC, student use of personal electronic devices. This policy is quite similar to what the board looked at but did not have first reading or approved first reading of at the August 13th school board meeting and then also discussed at the August work session. So as we typically do, changes from the last time the policy was presented are reflected in red line, additions are, or strike throughs, and additions are reflected in red font. And many thanks to Ms. Murphy and Ms. Henderson for their work on looking at the policy, taking the input the board had received, and proposing changes for presentation of this policy for first reading. So just calling out, the additions would be at line five. There had been two options previously presented to, to the board or that the board had discussed at the August meeting and work session. So the board is going with option two and deleting option one, adding that the devices are not allowed at the preschool through eighth grade during the school day, and clarifying that instructional time at the high school at lines 30 to 32 is during classes and assemblies. Adding, or adding some clarification at line 48, that school-sponsored off-campus activities will be included in the parameters of, of regulation. And also adding at line 60 and 61, that the board will review the policy annually to make sure that it fits the needs of teachers, staff, and students. Happy to answer any questions the board may have, or to defer to you all to discussions of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minson. Now we'll open the floor to questions, comments. We haven't revisited this topic, or we haven't visited this topic since a number of months ago. We've had a number of town halls with students, with staff, with community members. So this is our revisiting in January like we committed. So let's, let's pick it back up. Ms. Silverman, you want to start it off?
Thank you, Chair. I know that you defined instructional time to include classes and assemblies. To me, classes is still vague. Does that include stable group? Does that include Mustang block? Or is that all other classes, but not those two? Classes just seems still too ambiguous to me, undefined.
Can you suggest a way to clarify that? Mustang, Mustang block is an advisory period. Lunch is, lunch is lunch. Passing period's not instructional time. Would you like us to clarify that somehow in there?
Well, I mean, is Mustang block a class? Is stable group a class?
They are not, they're not classes. They are advisory periods where students get advisement. They do, sometimes they'll do enrichment kinds of activities. Sometimes they'll get intervention activities. Sometimes they'll get SEL, or social emotional learning activities. But they are not assigned classes like English, social studies, science, math, language, band. They're assigned on their cards, their, their schedule cards, but it's not assigned like an academic class. There's not a grade associated with it.
So are students, are, are students required to be at stable group if they're assigned to stable group?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a teacher in there?
Yes. So there's no, there's no new material. I think Ms. Rice wanted to maybe give some information to.
I was just going to say Mustang block, students are like roaming the school and there, there's no one that they have to meet with. They can meet with teachers if they want to, but that's definitely like a free period where students can like work on homework or do things that they find like fun or relaxing. But then stable group is definitely, so on Mondays, we have it for an hour, and that's def- it's not an instructional period, but there is content that your stable group teacher will go over with you about maybe what's happening in the school that week, or some values that the school wants to stress for like that time of the year. So in my opinion, I think it would make sense for phones to be away during stable group because that is in a classroom and there are already like phone lockers in there. So that just makes sense, and I think that's what a lot of stable groups have been doing. But then Mustang block, because students can go anywhere they want, I wouldn't like call that a class period.
So I agree with you. I, you know, would completely ignoring the teacher and talking to your friends be acceptable in stable group? I'm going to guess not. I'm guessing there has to be attention given to the teacher who's in the room. And so if you're not allowed to, you know, just completely ignore that, the teacher, and talk to your friends and do whatever you want, and you have to be listening, then to me, that means phones shouldn't be present during that time.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Other questions or reactions to that, or other thoughts in general? Dr., Mr. Anderson?
I'm probably the lone voice on this, but I will reiterate my kind of position that I think we should ban bell-to-bell. I do think that a lot of the discussion that we've had on phone usage in schools has focused more on the high performers and what they can do with, productively with their phones, and not enough on the students who are going to, who have trouble with having phones. And I've talked to several parents, several students. Phones are still being used in classrooms. Students are still texting their parents to see if they can get more time on Instagram during class. I'm not quite sure if the door pockets, while they've probably mitigated some of the kind of behaviors that we don't want to see in classrooms, I don't think that they've kind of led necessarily to what I think is an optimal way of being in instructional time. And so I don't think that we should be allowing phones in schools. I don't think that anyone's made the case that they've made schools better. And I don't think if we, if you can't make the case that phones have made schools better, I'm not quite sure we should be allowing phones in schools. But I'm probably the lone voice on that, so that's totally fine. That being said, I think having stable group as a phone-free space would make sense. There's a purpose for it. If the purpose is not to be on the phone, then you shouldn't have phones available to you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is, oh, add, yeah, Ms. Silverman?
I just wanted to say you're not the lone voice. I 100% concur.
Ms. Henderson?
So I want to thank all the members of the public who participated in the various focus groups, the ones we held at the schools, the ones we held with parents, the ones we held with students, all of the feedback. One of the students in their comments on their written feedback wrote, "No one's going to read this." I read it. I saw it, read every word that y'all submitted, and I really, really appreciate that. One of the things that I learned is that there are academic and educational reasons that students, and some students in the high school use their phones for. And so I think that is important as we move into this new world to be mindful and aware of. While I generally agree with my colleagues that I would generally prefer not to see phones in schools, I do think that that is a reality that is happening in our school, that there is educational purposes for which phones are used. My personal interpretation of the current draft is that it allows the superintendent room to define instructional time at the high school. So defining it as including classes and assemblies is not exclusive of the superintendent saying stable group is instructional time in the regulations, or Mustang block is instructional time, or if those might change in the future years, whatever we call them and how we use them. So I'm comfortable with it written as is. The other piece about the current draft is it requires us as a board to revisit it every year. So if we look at it after a year and go, "This is not working," and they need to be out, we, we have built that in, that kind of accountability mechanism for us to evaluate it each time. I think it will be absolutely critical if we do pass a policy as currently drafted or similar to currently drafted that is not bell-to-bell, that the enforcement be rigorous and age-appropriate, because the policy is irrelevant if the enforcement is not there. And so that I look to the superintendent, really our future superintendent for next year, and, and the leadership team of the schools to make sure that we, that they are implementing the policy with fidelity, with the focus on the educational outcomes, which is the purpose of it.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Not to jump to Dr. Wright, but I know, Dr. Wright, last time we talked, you mentioned that you were going to connect with some of the, the schools and some of the principals around their trying out different programs and things like that. Any, anything came back that you want to share with us as you were going through this process?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Gould, and good evening to the board. So I think that as we were reaching out to some of the schools that were, and divisions that were trying different approaches, whether it's, whether it's the phone pockets on doors or yonder pouches, I think, I think a lot of it was, you know, they're still trying to understand that impact that they're seeing. We had a site visit at one of the schools that was impacted by the snow. So we'll try and revisit that to actually be able to go see some of that in person. But I, I think, you know, what we're hearing is some of the, the similar challenges that we're talking about, that Ms. Henderson just referred to, the enforcement and having a clear and consistent policy is going to be one of the things that is going to allow us to be successful. And that, you know, they, as they're going through that process, that idea that you have written into the draft language of having an annual review process to make sure it's meeting the needs of the staff is going to be something that's really critical.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. I know, Dr. Wright, you and I also attended the session at VSBA where a district, I can't remember which county it was, implemented bell-to-bell the yonder pouches in their path. They've been doing that for a couple of years.
Yeah, that's correct. That was Hopewell City Schools, which is a very small division right outside of the Richmond area. And, and they had started with yonder pouches, 100% of the students, bell-to-bell. I believe this is year three or year four of them. And so as they were talking about that, one of the things, you know, one of my takeaways from that session was the iteration that they had to do throughout. And also that even with the yonder pouches, they were still finding that there were still ways of students to get around some of them. So I think having to constantly review it was, was something that was important for them, and I imagine it will be for us as well.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. And I notice also the two local school districts, Alexandria City and Arlington, recently passed district-wide bell-to-bell. I imagine that would be for the fall of this year. It might be. Is that when it's, do you know if that's, I think Arlington just passed it last week or the week before. I think Alexandria City passed it recently as well, but it might be something also, especially to Ms. Henderson's point, and revisiting this every year, we might want to just continue to keep that outreach going to figure out how it's going with those, I think those whole districts.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm familiar with both of those policies that were adopted. I do not know the actual implementation dates, but we can definitely work with the leaders in those divisions to kind of be thought partners in this process and kind of see how it's working for them and be able to report back during those annual check-ins.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's what I struggle with, with this, is I, I think that when we talked about this in August or September, I can't remember the date, there was a character, there was a concern about if we do a bell-to-bell that we're not listening to what teachers are asking for. And, and I, and we all tried to backtrack from that. We tried to clarify that, obviously, in our subsequent meetings. I think some of the districts that I've seen implement bell-to-bell, some of the feedback that I've read is the teachers have appreciated it because they don't have to deal with this anymore. They don't have to deal with the pouches. They don't have to try to worry about police, and it takes it away from them. And that's something I just think we're, I'm, I'm curious about as we keep continuing to explore, as to Ms. Murphy's idea about making sure we revisit this every year, if this is becoming a distraction. Ms. Rice, do you have any thoughts? I know you've had conversations with your, you know, your classmates and your own experiences, but any reflections that you've had from our initial discussion when that whole table was filled with lots of voices and?
Um, I would say I think that phone use has definitely decreased significantly by probably 95%. And then in some classes, you know, if we finish early, the teacher just doesn't really like feel like dealing with, "Oh, you can't go get your phone, you can't go get your phone." So if she's done teaching, then she's like, "Okay, you guys can get your phones." And then maybe we'll have our phones for like that period, because I think some of the teachers just don't want to deal with keeping them away from us. But in other cases, like I've never seen an issue where, at least in the classes that I'm in, the teacher is like consistently telling someone to get off their phone because the phones are in the pouches, compared to last year and the years before, where the teachers would be telling the same kids over and over again to put their phones away. So in that way, I think it has been helpful.
All right, thanks, Ms. Rice. Do you have any questions for us or any thoughts about this? I mean, I know this might, will this will affect your future, yeah, classmates as you jet off to UVA as Ms. Teis just alerted us? So yes, yeah, we don't know what their cellphone policy is there, but congratulations on.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, Chair Gould. Can I?
Dr. Nune?
I have a meeting tomorrow with my regional colleagues, and I just, I wanted to clarify that Arlington policy is that they do allow students in high school to use their phones during non-instructional time.
And that was a policy the school board passed last week?
Yeah.
That it's not, it's bell-to, it's not?
It says they need to power them down through the day and store their device during class time, but they are allowed to use them during non-instructional periods such as lunch.
Okay, all right, thanks for the clarification.
And I'll check in with my colleague from Alexandria tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nune. Other thoughts or reflections, Ms. Sherwood?
Thank you. No, I, thank you. I think I have appreciated listening to everybody's comments. I've appreciated in particular having the opportunity to go to the town halls and learn from all the students and all of the teachers and all the other community members. And I think I, I just really felt that what Ms. Henderson was, said was really well said. For me, hearing the specific sort of academic and instructional uses was very useful and, and understanding that the teachers are thus far happy with the policy as it is this year. Those are the two sort of most influential factors for me currently, but I'm, I think it's especially important, as several voices have already said, to have this annual review, and I think that's going to be really useful next year. So thank you.
Ms. Sherwood, can you also talk about the complexity? I think you were, you and I were talking before the meeting started about the senior, yeah, that was a good point as well.
Yeah, I think what you and I had, had discussed, and I've sort of discussed with others, is, you know, there's such developmental differences between our freshmen and our seniors. And in a really perfect world for me, I would love to see some ability to have further restrictions perhaps for thinking off the cuff for freshmen and sophomores versus juniors and seniors. But talking through that with you all individually and with some other members of our community, it's that, from an implementation perspective, that just doesn't seem at all achievable. And that, to me, is, is difficult, but a reality. And so, you know, for me, my choice would then fall to not a bell-to-bell, but this during instructional use time. If there were some way to divide it developmentally, I might, I might have a different feeling for bell-to-bell for, for certain age groups, but that's where I fall.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. Ms. Murphy?
I, I just wanted to make a quick comment about how influenced I was. I think when I first approached this issue, I felt very strongly that, well, I felt very strongly that this is the policy that we should implement. And, and I, but in the process allowed me to hear the opinions of many different perspectives, many different parents, community members, staff, and students. And, and I was influenced by that. And I wanted to say thank you for all the different perspectives offered on this issue. It's such an important one, and I, because I was influenced, it didn't lead me to change my original opinion on what the outcome should be. It did, it did, it did make me think that we needed to revisit this policy in a year, and that's why we decided to add that provision. Technology changes, needs of our students and our community is always changing, and so that's why I'm glad that we included that in the final policy, I shouldn't say final policy, in the draft of the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I appreciate that. Dr. Nune, do you mind if we go to you about just your reflections and your thoughts? I mean, you have worn a number of hats. I'm sure you saw the rise of cellphones when you were teaching and, and the school leader. You also have a, a daughter in the schools that's going to be impacted by this policy. So just any thoughts as we've been discussing this over the last four or five months?
I think the conversation's been really rich and, and robust, and I think meaningful in many ways. I, I know that the team of teachers that were here that had a chance to share their thoughts, knowing that you kind of took a step back, really felt like they were heard. I think, you know, Ms. Rice's comments, I think, are, are good to listen to. I think she's a great representative. And I, I also appreciate the fact that you guys led so many town halls and, and got a chance to hear from parents and from students. It is, you know, the rise of the cellphone is an interesting question. I had one of the first cellphones that was in a bag that was like a brick, and, and now, you know, now we've got like mini computers in our pockets. I, I do think what you've heard is, is probably accurate, and that is that cellphone use at the high school has really dropped a lot. We've been in classrooms, we're there quite often and are not seeing it. And I think our teachers that are enforcing it, and, and we will double down on that if they aren't enforcing it once this policy is in place, because we want to make sure that all of our teachers are, are following the policy. I, I think those folks have really appreciated the fact that they're, that they are off and away. The only other thing I would say is this, and, and it is, it's got to be a joint effort, you know, between us and, and the parent community. And I think this is where, as a parent of a 15-year-old, you know, if, if I didn't want her to have access to her phone during the day, I actually can go on my phone and cut off her service. Kids don't have access to the Wi-Fi at the high school anymore without a password, so the only way that they can get out onto the internet or to any of their social media is through cell, their cell signal. And I, as a parent, can cut my student's cell signal off whenever I want, and reinstate it whenever I want. And so, you know, one thing I, I would say, if parents are really inclined to make sure that their kids don't have cell service, then, or inclined to not have a cellphone at school, you know, exercise that. And then if there is an emergency, you can always turn that cell signal back on. And, and I just think it needs to be a good partnership between the parents and the schools. And I think there are ways that parents can also, also help implement, you know, the off and away throughout the day. But I, I do appreciate all your work on it, and I think wherever you land is wherever you land, and it's, it's your decision ultimately.
Thank you, Dr. Nune. Vice Chair Teis?
Okay, well, I have had my hand up this whole time, and I want to thank you all because each time I wasn't called on, you said something I was about to say. So thank you. I will keep this very short because you've all said all the things I wanted to say. But I did want to thank Ms. Henderson and Ms. Murphy for working with Ms. Minson on getting this policy ready for tonight. I'm really proud of it. I think we worked really hard. And at one point in this process, I think it was Ms. Henderson that said, "This is definitely a topic where reasonable people can disagree." And I think we saw through all of our conversations, there is a lot of nuance here, a lot of detail. Will be important for us to revisit. I especially agree with Ms. Sherwood's comment that the developmental needs of a 14-year-old are very different than a legal adult 18-year-old. And maybe it's, it's because I'm starting to see the world of the upperclassmen, but I really appreciate that, that perspective. And keeping in mind that this policy governs the whole spectrum of high schoolers, including our, you know, legal adults. So who are working their way out into the real world. So thank you, and I am looking forward to voting on this.
Thank you, Ms. Teis. Thank you, Ms. Tice. Any other comments, questions from the board? And so we're, Ms. Minson, just from a process, there are, we have, this is the version that we'll be voting on for first reading. I'll revisit it in a month for second reading. Is there any proposed changes to the, to the language? Yes, Ms. Silverman?
Yes, I would like to move stable group out of, into a classroom category if students are supposed to be listening. Otherwise, I don't understand what the purpose of stable group is if you can just sit on your phone during that whole block.
Oh, Ms. Tice?
I was just going to reiterate Ms. Henderson's comment that I think that leaving it as is still gives the superintendent and the principal the flexibility to determine what is instructional time based on this wording. I agree with you that I think stable group shouldn't be, phones shouldn't be used during stable group, but I'm comfortable with the way this is written because I think it will come through in the implementation and regulation.
I also think that leaving the policy as written allows for flexibility in case more category, you know, more classes, names of classes change, more classes are that we want to add to that group, classes that the school wants to subtract to that group. I like leaving that flexibility in there for that without having to, it just eliminates the need for us to go back and rewrite to make a ministerial change.
Ms. Anderson, thank you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Anderson?
So I appreciate that we want to let them have the flexibility and we don't want to like name a particular class. It could be that we could say, you know, instructional time includes assemblies and those times in which students are assigned to a teacher who they are supposed to meet Because presumably, we don't want them on their phones when they're assigned to a teacher and they're meeting with them. But I'll defer to the attorneys to figure out whether that's broad enough for flexibility and also taking care of the goals that we want.
Sure. I, I mean, I, I understand your point and, and, you know, kind of going back to stable group, I agree that stable group should be part of the, should be considered instructional time. My concern with your suggestion, Mr. Anderson, is simply that I think that actually broadens and it makes it a little bit too vague to interpret that specifically.
So my understanding of this policy is that the superintendent and his team are going to have to write a regulation to enforce it, right? So I would hope that sitting here, they understand the will of the board and the desire to have stable group included in the classroom time and that you've heard that loud and clear. I think leaving it as written allows that flexibility. I would be extremely disappointed to see a regulation that does not account for things like stable group as classroom time.
Does that sound, does anybody else have any, does that sound fair in terms of the, from Ms. Tice, Ms. Sherwood? And that the options are to take out stable group or to, to lean on the regulation to make sure that that's defined?
Right. I'm going to concur with others, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Henderson, Ms. Tice, who have said the language as is, I think, is appropriate. And I think using the regulation for that purpose makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So then that gives us the, yeah, we'll go ahead and lean that in terms of the regulation. Dr. Noonan for Ms. Henderson's point?
We certainly understand the will of the board.
Okay. Okay. All right. So now we're going to go ahead. If there's any other final comments on this, again, to Ms. Murphy's point, I think on behalf of the board, we appreciate Ms. Rice, all of your coordination with the students and everyone who attended from parents and community and students and staff. That was a, a community effort for discussion. So with that, I think I'm going to need a motion for, for 8.02, first reading of cellphone policy. Ms. Vice Chair Tice?
I move that the school board approve first reading of policy JT EC, student use of personal electronic devices as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Do I have a second? Ms. Sherwood, thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
For?
Do you want me to do a roll call vote?
Let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Gold?
Epstein?
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
No.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell.
The motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Now we're going to move on to 9.01, future agenda items. Dr. Noonan?
If you have any. We have slotted in the, you all had asked for a work session on behavior and we've slotted that in for April. But if there are other items that you have some interest in, this is sort of a tough time with the budget and, and the other work that you're working on, but we're certainly happy to open it up.
Yeah. And just to highlight that, I think our budget session question and answer is usually about an hour to an hour and a half per meeting. Is that fair?
That might be a little over.
A little over?
Yeah. We usually go through them pretty quickly. We've been asked not to sort of read them anymore. So we sort of just do high level and then if you all have any follow-up questions associated with those, we'll, so, you know, we've got some, we've got some time if you have something big that you want to get some information about, but, but let's not, I don't, you don't have to make work.
Okay. Okay. Fair enough. Any comments, any thoughts on future agenda items besides the addition of discipline that will happen in April? And we all have the document that's publicly posted, I'm pretty sure, that has all the different topics and things coming up.
You can always bring those up at another time, too, so.
Okay.
It's just the formal, formal opportunity.
Formal opportunity. All right. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to section 10, superintendent's report, 10.01.
Great. Thanks. And thanks to the chair for recognizing our principles for Principal Appreciation Week. I just want to take a second to give a shout out to all five of them. They have done extraordinary work, especially through the last two weeks with a snowstorm and a flood and all kinds of fun stuff. But really, day in and day out, they lead their schools in really extraordinary ways and are really great, great people and glad to have them on board. Just in terms of investing in our people, please, if you haven't already, we have extended the deadline to write letters of support for our employees of the year to Tuesday, January 21st. We have some incredible employees here in the city of Falls Church that go way above and beyond. This is not for board members, this is more for the community. But it's our chance to say thank you to this impressive list of 17 employees that have been nominated for awards. Everyone in the community has an opportunity to write a letter of support. And if you go onto our website and look up employee recognition award page, you certainly can put that in through the letter, support, through the support portal that's there. Under wellness equity and belonging, MLK Day is Give Day for most of our schools this year. It's January 20th. It's a day of service. Our middle school students are remembering Dr. King's contributions by planning and participating in Give Day, which stands for Get Involved, Value Everyone. And that's Monday from 10 o'clock until noon. And the students will pack meals for the outreach program to raise awareness around hunger and raising funds and getting our students involved. So thanks to our Henderson PTA who are helping head that up. And the elementary Give Day is going to actually be on March 28th. They are going to go a little bit later this year. Additionally, on Martin Luther King Day, it's the annual March for Unity and Freedom and Social Justice Workshop. Our friends at the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation are holding their annual MLK Saturday, January 18th at 10 o'clock. They're gathering at Tanner Hill, the Memorial Arch on South Washington. And March continues to the Falls Church Episcopal Church and then include some talks on social justice. And hopefully, those that are interested will come. Friday is the deadline for the registration for the lottery for Jesse Thackeray Preschool for the 25-26 school year. Under the director, direction of Allison Klink, the application process for JTP has been revamped with the intent of matching JTP's application window with other local preschools. So it's a little bit sooner than we've had it in the past, which is good, actually. And the deadline for the lottery does close on January 17th at 4:00. And then families that are selected will be notified on the 21st of January. This last week, we had an opportunity to welcome back a number of our students to the high school who earned their IB diploma last year. Of course, IB does their external adjudication of the, of their, of their coursework and assessments. And students who graduate don't actually know if they have the diploma until after school is out. So we do hold a celebration for them. And this year, we had several of our students come back and we're really, really excited to see them. We were very excited to see them. Winter sports are in full swing. If you've been reading the morning announcements, you know that our students and coaches are busy with winter sports, with basketball, wrestling, swim and dive, indoor track, cheer and gymnastics, and lots of opportunities to catch our teams in action. I had a really nice opportunity to, and I lost it now, but I did have a chance to get a letter from Mr. Laub that came via Ms. Calabrese, who is our senior class president, requesting the superintendent's approval of senior privileges for this year. So Charlotte, I'm assuming that you are in favor of senior privileges?
I am.
And I just want to let the team know that I will be sending a letter out to the senior class officers tomorrow granting those senior privileges. So excited to be able to do that. And then the last thing, since the field of dreams is the theme of the night, let's talk about baseball, shall we? So let me, let me just kind of give you sort of a, where we are with baseball. There's been a lot of maybe misinformation, a lot of sort of talk in the community, and I want to clarify a couple of things and then kind of let you know where we are. So we have a company called Field Turf that has been working with a company called LDL, which is the company that does the, all of the engineering, is the, is the group that's responsible for helping us put in the new baseball field. When we submitted our application to put the baseball field in, we got a letter from Field Turf that said it would take eight weeks to install the baseball field. Knowing that we had sort of a later first game in March for our varsity, we've been holding on and holding on and holding on, holding out hope that we would be able to begin the process of installation of our, our field turf. Last Monday, we had a call with all of the vendors that are associated with the baseball project. That includes not just the field turf, but also the engineers, the people that are doing the fence, long fence company, along with press box people that are going to be putting that in. And it became imminently evident last Monday that we were likely not going to meet our, our timelines and our marks, which meant that we were, we were in a bind. And so we immediately went to work to figure out what alternatives might be available to us, speaking with our, our high school folks, speaking with our principal, speaking with others, looking at alternatives. Right now, we are working through those alternatives and believe that we have a pretty good plan in place for baseball this year. So I want to clarify first and foremost, baseball is going to happen and it's going to happen well. We promised our baseball parents that we would give them an update tomorrow. We are still working through some final details associated what that, with what that plan is going to look like. And, and some, and there are two different directions that we're looking at depending on the outcome of what happens over probably the next 12 to 16 hours. And, and as soon as we know what the final option is going to be, we will send that out to, to the board first and then on to our baseball parents. But, but again, right now, we feel like we have some really good options that are available to us and, and the baseball season is not, not at all in jeopardy and it will happen. There has been some questions about costs. So one of the things that we, Kristin, Michael, our chief operating officer and I decided to do was to engage Daisy Brangman from Brailsford and Dunleavy to come in and help us with this project immediately. And I want to let the board know that we had already had Daisy on contract to do the construction portion of this project, that we were doing the pre-construction work, meaning that we were getting all the permits pulled, we were getting all the, all the information that needed to be in place for us to start the project. And then once the project started, Daisy and Brailsford and Dunleavy was going to, were going to take over and do the construction of the project. Daisy has been gracious enough to say that she'll pick up the rest of the pre-con on this. And has already held a big meeting with all of the people that are involved with putting the, putting the field together and is moving forward. So, so there isn't going to be a whole lot of additional cost based on the fact that we had already hired Brailsford and Dunleavy to do the, the construction portion. If we do need to move to another space, a rental space, there will be additional costs. And those additional costs will include transportation that will be needed. And we believe that we have someone who has, we're working on someone who believes they're going to come back for, from retirement to drive the baseball if we do end up going to an alternative site. And then also, if we do end up going to an alternative site, there will be a cost associated with that. So the question is, where is the money going to come from? And we do have a community service fund, a community activities fund that we collect through fees for uses of our buildings and our fields and the like. And we would take the money required. We don't know the exact amount right now because we haven't determined what the final outcome is going to be. But any money that is spent out of that community fund would be replenished as soon as, as soon as possible through the revenues generated from the new turf field that's going to be on the, on the baseball field. Because once that's installed through the summer, it's going to get a lot of play and a lot of use. It's going to be a highly sought-after field in the Northern Virginia region. So we have no doubt that this will be, in many ways, not cost neutral, but it will be, it will cost upfront and we will make up those costs in the revenue that's generated from the rental of the field. I hesitate to go into too many details about, you know, whether or not we're going to be moving to a different site because we don't have, we've been working it like crazy for the last week and a half and we anticipate that we should have some answers tomorrow. And as soon as we have those final answers, we will give them. But the good news is, if there is good news in this, you know, baseball season starts February 24th. It's right now the middle of January. If we got to a place where we had to get the old field back into playable shape, we believe we can do that. That is not, that is not our first choice. But I, again, I don't want to go into too many details and I just ask that you all bear with us for one more day, but know that the first we learned of this issue about not being on time really was the first of last week. And then we went into three snow days. But we really thought that with an eight-week install, we could get there. And unfortunately, it, it doesn't look as though that's going to happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I, again, I, I'm a little light on too many details about the when, the where, because I, I want to make sure that I give you the best information we have and that I don't overpromise and under-deliver for the community. But I, I do want to make sure that you know and that the baseball community knows that we will have a season. It will be a successful season and there, there are some, some really good options on the horizon.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, for the report and the baseball field. Just a few questions on that. And admittedly, the role of the school board is mostly around governance, well, not mostly, but it is around governance and policy and budget. So I think the budget overlap is something that we're most interested in. There has been a number of emails to, mostly to your office, which is the right direction because you all will have the answers to this and you're project managing this. But from a budget standpoint, you know, the $2 million was approved for the new field. Do you have even just a general range of what the, so there's three buckets that are going to be now included costs or new costs. There's going to be project management, field rental and transportation. You're saying the project management fees are actually, we've already built that in. So that's not going to be a?
Be fairly de minimis.
Fairly de minimis. Okay. And then the transportation, that would be through our typical bus activities budget so that we would have that covered with our existing funds?
No. We would need to pay the, the person that would be coming out of retirement to, to do the overtime. They would be considered overtime runs if it wasn't that person and if it was somebody on staff. But we're anticipating- somebody on staff. But we're anticipating about $100 a day for those runs. And then, the field, if we were to move to a field rental, there's one field that charges $100 per game. And there's, and there are, there is some other fields that charge $200 a day for practices. So, we've done the back of the napkin on this. And again, depending on which direction we go, I wouldn't anticipate this costing the school system more than between $25,000 and $30,000. And that money would be replenished back into the coffers through the community use of the field once it's installed.
The rental of the field?
The rental of the field, yes.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, and I'll obviously ask other board, the direction of the continuing on the existing installation versus the less ideal, I think is how you characterize it. You're going to make that decision with your team-
Tomorrow.
-in the next 24 hours. And then, you're going to, soon, you're going to alert to the baseball community very soon after, I imagine.
We anticipate sending something to the community, baseball community, by close of business tomorrow.
By close of business tomorrow. Okay. And I think various concerns that we've heard are, and again, I know there's a lot of questions and concerns and disappointment, understandably.
None greater than mine. I assure you that.
I, yes, I don't think there's any baseball families up here. But if former Chair Downs was here, yeah, she would be right here in spirit, sharing some of the disappointment. But the, in terms of, is there any option on the table to have all away games, no home games, meaning around here? Would we be traveling? Would our kids be traveling twice a week, for example? Is that even on, is that being considered?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's being, okay. And then, the rental fields are in closer proximity to this area?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Can you clarify closer?
Within-
20 minutes, 25 minutes?
Yeah, 25 minutes, 20 minutes. Yeah, yeah. I think that seems, yeah, that's-
I think 25 minutes is the furthest field that we're exploring at this point.
Okay. Okay. And I don't know if there's high schools that we could partner with. I'm sure there is-
There are not.
There are not, because they're using the same fields for the same purpose. Okay.
So, we're looking for, we are looking for 90-foot diamond fields that are not currently associated with schools, high schools.
High schools.
There are a lot of other fields that are available that we're working on right now as options.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Silverman?
Thank you for your work on this. I have a couple of questions. How quickly, I know you can't predict, but if you can just get a good sense of how quickly the funds would be replenished through renting out our field?
I don't know.
Okay.
I imagine, let me just say it this way. Right now, the going rate for a field is about $130 an hour. So, if we were to rent it for two hours, say $250, and we're replenishing $25,000, what's that, 100 hours of rental? And 100 hours of rental probably would take, if we did 10 hours a month, you know, I don't, I don't know. It's going to take, it would take some time, but I don't, it's not insurmountable, especially in the summer, with the summer coming up. And the leagues, there's adult leagues, there's kids leagues. There are a number of jurisdictions right now that are looking for space because they're renovating fields. So, I would anticipate we'd be able to get it back pretty quickly.
Second question, if these funds were just going to come in and we didn't have this issue arise, what would we be doing with those funds instead? Like, so what is, what are we basically not funding because we're funding this?
We've used, well, we have the reserve in community use. And that's what we would be using, is the community use reserve funds. We have used community use for things in the past, even during our budget in January for, you know, outdoor playground equipment, things that are, things that are associated with fields that are rented, things that bring the facilities up to, it's all facilities-related and rental-related. So, it really would be out of a reserve. So, I think we'd be okay.
Other questions? Yes, Ms. Sherwood?
Just following up on that discussion about the community reserve, community use reserve fund, I don't have a good sense of the magnitude of that fund. What, I mean, what percentage of that do you think would be used?
Ms. Michael, do you want to answer that?
So, our community use fund each year generates fees that we charge to people that are using our buildings and facilities and grounds. So, it could be anything from someone coming in who's using a classroom to teach school, like we have some organizations that do Saturday school. And we rent our buildings for things like church on Sundays. So, those organizations play for church. And then, we also run adult leagues. So, many of you may have seen the semi-professional soccer team, for example, playing on the stadium field. So, all of those groups pay us rent for that time. From that rent, we use that funding, A, to pay for the people that we need to have on staff when those things are happening. So, if we have adult league playing basketball, for example, in the gym in the evenings, you know, we use that funding to pay the staff people that are there to support that endeavor. They could be the staff people at the door, or they could also be custodians that are cleaning after those people use the facilities. We also use the revenue from that fund to maintain those items that they're using. So, if we have to replace things due to use, we would be using community services fund for those items. So, they could be things like, you know, backstops or netting in terms of sports, other things like that that are, we're replacing because we're charging those fees to recover those costs, right? And really, when we set our community use fees, our goal really isn't to generate a large profit. It's to ensure that we're maximizing the use of our facilities and we're fully covering the cost of whatever that use is. And fully covering that cost, of course, would be all the staff, maintenance, and any replacement items.
What's the current balance in the community?
I need to pull the exact amount. I do believe we have a couple hundred thousand dollars in that fund, right? And we really do try to use that funding to support things related to sports. So, if we use community services funding to pay for these rental costs potentially elsewhere, then as we were generating that revenue, it would just come right back into the community services fund. And since that's a fully self-supporting fund, right, that balance carries over each year, and it's part of our year-end balance report to the board that we share. And then, any action that we take in terms of spending money from that fund are things that come back to the board. So, this last year, we talked about using community services funding in terms of some of the items that we had the board approve in November, I think it was.
I had a question about the one scenario that you mentioned where we would potentially have no, or have all away games during the season. I'm wondering what you mean by, how you would define away game? Because I'm imagining if we rent, if we rent a field, can we still host a game? So, or even though, like, is that considered an away game because it is not here in Falls Church? Or is that a Falls Church game hosted at a different field?
It would be, it would be a Meridian High School game hosted at an alternative site.
Okay.
So, it would be a home game for us, but it would be not on our site. It would be away. So, sorry for the confusing language.
Thank you for that. And so, does that mean that one of the options you're considering is not renting a space for games and having all away games?
What? Say that again.
So, if that's, so does that mean that one of the options you're considering is to have all away games? Should I interpret that as we wouldn't, we wouldn't rent a space for games?
We are considering an option where we would have all of our home games hosted at a different site.
Okay.
And we would be renting that site.
So, we would still have home games?
We would still have home games, yes. And the site that we're considering is $100 per game.
Thank you.
But we would not be having our students travel twice a week away, an hour away? That's, that's what, not going to happen, correct?
No, no. So-
I think that's what we-
Yeah. So, if you're driving at, like, this, one of the sites that we're looking at is about 10 minutes away. And that would be ideally where, if we were to go to an alternative site for home games, it would be that field 10 minutes away.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. As a parent of a child in athletics, not baseball, I was imagining a scenario where I was having to reel her in for-
In other words-
Away games all season and-
No, we wouldn't give up all our home games and just play all of them away. We would still play our, our games would be considered at home.
Yes.
But 10 minutes away from here.
You might want to clarify that. Yeah, that was, that was definitely something that we received. So, you might wish to clarify that. When you say away, we understand the, yeah.
Yeah, I definitely will do that.
Okay.
My hope was, in the communication tomorrow, is I could actually say where it was going to be. We're sort of finalizing some of those details in the case that we go that direction.
Okay. That sounds good. Ms. Anderson?
I want to follow up on Ms. Sherwood's question, just to make sure I understand. At the various options that you're looking at, would this deplete the contingency reserves fund? Or what percentage of the fund would we draw on roughly?
Roughly 10%.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, this is not what any of us thought was going to happen. We all anticipated that this field turf would be going in now. The field turf is going in at the stadium field right now. And the idea was for us to have one mobilization of the field turf group install at the same time. So, the fact that they're at the high school completing the field turf in the stadium field, they were going to move right into, to our baseball field, we, you know, we, I'm as disappointed as anybody else. And I'm, you know, I don't know what we, you know, anyway, it doesn't matter. But we feel like we've got a good plan.
Okay, great. And I think, to the point that you made about the timing, the baseball, the baseball community will find out tomorrow, close of business, about what the direction is, which I think is what they're looking for.
And we're going to do everything we can to give the most possible detail in that, in that email, so that everybody's really clear. We're still waiting on a couple callbacks. And hopefully, those will come tomorrow.
Okay, great. Okay. I know a number of emails come in. So, we'll continue to direct folks your way, assuming that there's able, the time to be able to reply and help with the communication, direct communication. Thank you, Dr.
And also, just by the way, I didn't mean to interrupt. I did ask PJ Anderson to send an email last week to all of the baseball parents, saying that something would come out this coming Wednesday. And he did that. So, I have not replied to all of the baseball emails that I've gotten, knowing that we were going to send something out on Wednesday. So, if people are waiting, I really was hoping that PJ would sort of serve as our communication liaison until this Wednesday came out.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification. All right. That concludes the superintendent's report. Most number of questions you might have received on the superintendent's report. But an important topic. So, now, we'll go ahead and move on to our board and student liaison comments. We'll start with Mr. Anderson. Where have you been and what you've been up to?
Been all over the place.
Great.
So, I had the pleasure of going back to my old stomping ground on the Special Education Advisory Committee last month, filling in for Ms. Murphy. And had the pleasure of receiving a focaccia from, yes, from Rebecca Sharp. It was quite delicious. But, you know, they celebrated the December 1 report being completed. That's the big report that the schools send in to the state about the state of the special education program for the schools. There were a couple of public comments on, you know, how the advisory committee meetings are noticed. And I think, you know, they're working with the schools to kind of make them a little bit more transparent and also just kind of show up in the morning announcements a little bit more, more frequently. And it was noted that the Falls Church Education Foundation funded an eight-session parent support group that had its first meeting last month at the community center. And I know a few people who went, and they said it was fantastic. And so, I want to give a shout out and a big thank you to the FCEF for funding that and for the schools for organizing that. Then, I did go to last week's Wreckin' Parks meeting, where the announcement for the baseball field delay was let out of the bag. So, thankfully, I didn't get the, all the emails. But they were directed to where they needed to go. There was, you know, just kind of an update on the HVAC project at the community center. The hydro, the geothermal wells are being drilled at this point. The staff, the Wreckin' Parks staff are moved into the portables at, into the trailers at Oak Street. So, they are very appreciative of the space. The student liaisons, Matthew Carvey and Anon Colby are doing some scouting for the Share the Air signs that we now have that are going to be put up in the parks to kind of advocate for no smoking in public parks. And we also, we also had a public comment there about people advocating for a pool at the schools. And then, we got a nice, at least a, you know, a 30-year history of advocacy for pools in Falls Church. So, that was all fun with no pool. Anyway, that's me.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Henderson?
The BIE is having, in lieu of its regularly scheduled meeting, this month is meeting with the superintendent search firm to provide community input. So, feel free to reach out to your BIE members, particularly members of the business community, if you'd like to weigh in. The PTAs are continuing to promote the community survey as well for the superintendent search. So, encourage all folks, all members of the community to complete that.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Ms. Silverman?
Yes, I went to a health and wellness committee meeting. One of the great things that came up was the quality of the lunches at the middle school and high school. And I referenced the presentation that we had had at the previous board meeting. And I think that there might be a tour maybe coming up for some of the health and wellness committee members.
I think what Ms. McCrina has decided to do is to host the next health and wellness committee meeting at the high school, so that after that meeting, they can see, Richard will come to the meeting-
Perfect, yeah.
And then, perhaps give a tour.
So, I guess I'm missing out because Ms. Murphy will be filling in for me. So, you get to, you get to experience that. But it was a really good discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Vice Chair Tice?
Yes. So, in December, right before break, Ms. Henderson and I had office hours. And a significant number of transportation staff came to share some various concerns. And I know it was a, some of them might be watching. I know it was a big deal for them to show up en masse after a long day of work. And I just wanted to assure them, if you're listening, that we do take their concerns very seriously. We shared them directly with Ms. Michael and Dr. Noonan. And I want to thank Ms. Michael and Dr. Noonan for being extremely receptive and responsive and all of the follow-up work they're doing. I know Ms. Michael spent time with staff today and has invited staff, each staff member to speak to her individually. And I encourage any staff who still have concerns to take Ms. Michael up on that generous offer and meet with her, even reach out to Dr. Noonan. I know our leadership is very committed to making sure our staff feel heard and to finding solutions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. And we'll go from one experienced cavalier to the newest cavalier, Ms. Rice, who is now going to put the Charlotte back in Charlottesville.
Wahoo-ah, Ms. Rice. Oh, that's good. That's good.
Thank you.
I had to say wahoo-ah as a fellow wahoo. So, congratulations.
The semester's ending, so students and teachers are excited about that and ready to kick off the second part of the year. We're all finishing up everything we need to do before the semester ends. Sophomore students are in the final stages of their personal projects and should be finishing those over the next couple of weeks. So, that'll be exciting to have the personal project fair and see what everyone has been working on. And all students in the high school have been invited to a meeting in mid-January to help with the search for the new superintendent. And they will be able to share their thoughts and what qualities I think a new leader should have. So, I think people are excited to feel involved in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Rice, for the updates. Ms. Murphy?
Yes. So, yesterday, I had the occasion to attend office hours with Chair Gold. It was at Ponjir, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, which is the Afghan restaurant on East Fairfax Street. So, if you haven't been there, I suggest you go because it is fabulous. We had two community members meet with us. One was there to express his concerns over the lack of progress on the turf field. I was grateful to, for his educating us on the concerns that he had, which I think will be addressed very shortly. I'm thankful for that, too. The second community member who stopped by, he knew that our budget would soon be presented, or would be presented today. So, he was there to discuss the broader issue of community growth and enrollment in the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Finally, Ms. Sherwood?
Thank you. I attended the Extended Daycare Advisory Board meeting last night in Ms. Murphy's place, since she was at office hours. And there, they approved the new summer camp fee schedule, which- And there, they approved the new summer camp fee schedule, which the school board, of course, approved tonight subsequently. They also discussed registration dates for summer camp. So, for those listening who are interested, February 10 is the registration date for current families for summer camp. For city residents, it'll be February 24, and March 3 for residents of other counties. Some other highlights, there are the advisory reports that daycare staff were really grateful for the staff appreciation they received in December from families. In terms of operations, they're fully staffed now and had 100% participation in their staff training last month. All enrollment went up with the start of January, except Oak Street after school, but there is a waitlist at Mount Daniel. They officially started their composting program, and they're working on their 50th anniversary planning, including a logo. Athletic Boosters met in December. As we heard earlier, they've submitted a public comment seeking funding based mostly on staffing. At their meeting, they noted with the change in the day of graduation that we approved in the 26, 27 calendar, it's moving to the Friday before Memorial Day in 2027, that they just noted that it'll be very important for the schools, parents, and athletic teams to communicate this change, so that teams can consider potential impacts on participation in playoffs. They also discussed some fundraising ideas and options for displaying trophies and awards. And I received an update from the Coral Boosters. As we heard earlier, they also submitted a public comment regarding staffing, and they are looking forward to their Broadway Desserts event at the end of this month. It actually will be held on January 31 and February 1, and this is a really fun event in which the high school and middle school choir students sing a variety of favorite Broadway songs, and attendees can enjoy dessert afterwards. And I went last year, and it was awesome, so I highly encourage everyone to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood. That concludes where we've all been and all the different updates, lots going on. So, now, we're going to move on to Section 12, Approval of Minutes, looking for unanimous consent for approval of minutes of December 10, 2024. All right, received unanimous consent. Thank you, Ms. Kadel, as always, for your work on this. Section 13.01, we have the membership, the FCCPS enrollment. Looks like we have two more students, Dr. Noonan, that we've got to add to the bar chart to get to 2715. Any other comments about the enrollment? All right, if not, move to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for hanging there. Have a good night.